Tuesday, January sixteenth, seven twenty-four, regular meeting of the Windsor Heights City Council. Roll call.
Susan Skiers.
Michael Libby.
Here.
Jason Jones, not yet. Lauren Campbell.
Here.
Teresa Harms.
Here.
Please join me in the allegiance. But allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We've both the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Susan Skiers.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
On humble.
Yes.
She's on.
Yes.
And in three, public forums, the time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda, no action being taken.
Uh, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and keep your comments to no more than five minutes. Any public comment?
Oh, well, well.
What's your button?
We'll wait for you.
Yeah.
Ready?
Ready.
Okay, consent agenda.
They're moved.
Back in.
Roll call.
Susan Skiers.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Yes.
Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Five A, consideration of Windsor Heights Foundation, uh, support request for the twenty twenty-four Knights in the Heights Concert Series in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Um, my understanding should be discussion in lieu of consideration. Is that correct, Adam?
Correct. Uh, that'll be incorporated, um, in whatever direction the council prefers for the next year fiscal budget. Uh, so just looking for some feedback this evening.
Okay, is there someone, um, are you discussing this, someone presenting on this or?
Uh, I believe we have Mark as well as several, uh, members of the foundation here to, to go over the highlights.
Shake your time. Uh, Mark Aaron's, uh, president of the Windsor Heights Foundation. And, um, we are proposing this year for fiscal, um, twenty twenty-five, um, fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, what we are, uh, proposing is that the city be, um, our primary sponsor for Knights in the Heights, um, events that take place, uh, through the summer. Uh, it is, uh, just one of the activities that the foundation puts on as, uh, to, uh, help, um, bring about, uh, the enhancement of lives through the, uh, into the city of Windsor Heights, but also, um, uh, it brings about a, um, kind of in a, I'm gonna use the word loosely, marketing base to sit, uh, to the city of Windsor Heights, um, with all of the, uh, crowds that come down specifically for, um, the Knights in the Heights. Uh, we have, um, had increases within our, uh, numbers that have been participating, uh, are coming to the, uh, concert series. Uh, we are putting on six Tuesdays, uh, this year, uh, one additional than what we have just because of the way the schedules come out. And then we'll have one Thursday night, uh, concert and event, uh, with Fourth of July. Um, as stated on that, our crowds, uh, have been increasing. We actually literally go around and use clickers to count the numbers that are there. We're averaging well over, um, two thousand twenty-five hundred per concert on, with it, uh, Fourth of July is our largest, uh, amounts. Uh, and it has become, uh, very popular because of, uh, the amount of, uh, volunteer hours that, uh, the foundation folks and members put in, let alone, uh, we also try and have been making sure that we book and pay for, uh, the probably some of the most popular metro bands that, uh, we can get, as well as having, um, quality food and beverage trucks, um, at each of the events. Uh, we are, um, in a sense on that, just like the city has, uh, been going through a little bit too. On that, our costs have increased, uh, over the years. Uh, since we began, we are, um, looking at other ways to, uh, uh, bring in sponsorships, which I think some of the council members are aware of. Um, with that, uh, we, uh, feel that, uh, throughout, um, uh, the Knights in the Heights on that, um, we can, um, showcase, uh, Windsor Heights itself, let alone Colby Park, um, with, um, in many manners. I think, um, this year will be a little bit different, uh, with the construction of the, uh, uh, playground area and some of the other, uh, movements of other, uh, uh, portions of the park itself around. We have looked at that, uh, internally to make sure that we can, uh, still handle, uh, things as, um, as it has been in the past and, uh, potentially, uh, have the increase of numbers that we've been getting yearly. Um, with that, uh, so with the fifteen thousand, we, uh, are trying to work with, uh, increasing, uh, not only ourselves, uh, uh, in the sense of, um, notoriety, uh, throughout, uh, Windsor Heights, uh, but also, um, the, uh, we bring in a lot of individuals and I do mean a lot. Um, in fact, uh, uh, at some of the concerts, we have taken, um, polls, um, loosely, but polls as to, uh, how many are from the metro area. And we've had as many as seventy-five percent of our crowd coming in from other communities surrounding areas. And things. For that, um, I'll open it up and if you want to ask any questions, I am going to, um, if you'll allow me to put in a personal note on that, when, uh, my family moved in, uh, in two thousand to Windsor Heights, we knew very, we really didn't know anybody here. And we moved in the spring and so Knights in the Heights was one of the first events that we, um, participated or came down to and we met, uh, major amount of individuals, um, e- even from our neighborhood that we did not know. Um, at that time, the Ice Cream Social, which we do annually, was being held in August. Uh, we now have moved that up to June, um, feeling that, uh, it is a way for, uh, families in neighborhoods, uh, to be, uh, able to, uh, come out away from school's time and, uh, be together in, in the Ice Cream Social. So we've brought that forward in timeframe. But for me on that, um, our family on that had a great time. It was, we didn't know, uh, a lot of, uh, things throughout Windsor Heights, let alone, um, we knew Colby Park just because my two boys, um, needed somewhere to go and play heavily and, and, but with that, we, um, we were able to, as a family on that, uh, gain, gain a greater appreciation of what Windsor Heights has to offer. And I think that's what we do as a foundation. So I'll open it up if there's any.
So just a point of clarification. Thank you, Mark. Um, I appreciate all the work you do and all of those that the, of the foundation. Um, big fan of the foundation and support and, and the work that you all do. Um, Adam, just for clarification, so this is for our fiscal year that will start next year. And I can't remember, did we, how did we do this last year? Did we do? Do we also, I know it came via this direction, but I can't remember if we approved or I, I think it should be a part of our budgeting process. So, okay, um.
I, I'd have to look back at Rochelle for how it was handled last year, but, uh, Mark and I have visited that, uh, the funds would not be that be needed by the foundation until after July first. So they would cash flow, uh, the purchase of the fireworks, um, presumably before July first and they'd be reimbursed by the city. Uh, tonight, yeah, we're just looking for feedback from council on whether you'd like to allocate some or all of the funds to incorporate into the budget that you'd pass in March and April.
Okay. Um, next question, Mark, what is your entire budget? What part, what part of it? So you talked about Knight in the Height, and Knights in the Heights, what is the entire budget for Knights in the Heights?
Our total budget is, um, probably is close to thirty-five thousand.
Okay.
So, um, with some of the other things that take place.
So that's for Knights in the Heights is thirty-five or?
No.
Sorry.
Um, our Knights in the Heights, along with if I can include the Fourth of July, uh, with that is closer to twenty-eight.
Okay, alright.
But that includes all the bands and, uh, uh, everything that is needed, security, uh, which we provide, the amenities, uh, such as porta potties, um, which we try to have, uh, uh, extra large amount on hand for Fourth of July. Um, and then, uh, for us, uh, we, uh, also, um, have security throughout the whole year just because we have one, uh, primarily because we have a beverage truck that is adult beverages. So it's required by, with the city. Don't know if I can allow any of my other members that may want to step forward or, um, make comment at this time.
Did they answer your que, did he answer your question?
Um, yeah, I think that question was answered. Thank you.
Mark, I know there's been similar requests in the past that should have been, uh, approved, obviously. Has this been, have, has the city, refresh my memory, has the city, um, approved this amount in the past?
Not this high, no, but we also have been eating a lot of extra costs these last several years that we, um, uh, had not anticipated, let's put it that way. Uh, um, when, uh, when the city decided to, um, go forward with Fall Fest and have fireworks on that, we, uh, that was, uh, something that we felt and, uh, talking with community, uh, citizens, let alone, uh, uh, businesses on that, uh, we would continue on with the fireworks itself. So a portion of, uh, what we're asking for, uh, will go towards that, let alone, uh, the rest of the concert series.
Um, could you refresh my memory? So the asks in the past, what were they?
Uh, we had, uh, last year was right at five, I believe. And been. So it is significant. We understand that, but we also, um, are working towards doing things. Um, we want to, uh, our goal, uh, within the next, uh, year or two is to get back to where we are giving back to, um, uh, the city itself on improvements throughout the city. Most likely towards Colby Park itself on some things, but there are other areas that we have covered. The trails and all.
I've got a question. Um, so I know that, uh, the foundation, um, is, uh, tapping into the great opportunities for sponsorship through the chamber.
Right.
Um, and, uh, uh, thinking about the sponsorship opportunities that you have out there. Um, with this amount, is this, or would, would you consider that like next year, after growing your sponsorship base, the ask next year would be lower to off, as the sponsorship would offset it, or is this, um, are you wanting to forecast that, you know, year over year, looking for a similar dollar amount from the city?
Very good question. Yeah, with, um, with the chamber starting back up and that's where the sponsorship that I think you're referring to on that with Tiffany and all, um, we anticipate that we probably will not have to have as much asking, uh, going forward. Um, in this case on that, uh, since TRC has not started up the Total Resource, uh, Campaign, um, and we're just getting kind of acquainted with it, if you will. Um, our hope, our, uh, thoughts, our goals are to have good sponsorships with the programs itself, um, on the various ones, whether it be the Ice Cream Social, Luminaries, um, and, uh, any other type of assistance, um, where we give, uh, to say Fall Fest a little more and, and contribute in greater ways than just, uh, booking and paying for the band for things like that. So there are things that I think, um, over the outside sponsorships will help, um, us in, in many ways, but also help the city because we're gonna, uh, forward those monies, uh, as well as we can back.
Thank you.
Mark, do you think this would be something that we should wait until like the end of the TRC event to see what we have for sponsorships?
Um, to be upfront, um, I will, we're hoping no, if I'll be frank. Um, our thoughts are that the city would, um, be a main, the main, uh, event sponsor for, uh, Knights in the Heights in all the activities in the summer, uh, itself, uh, for this upcoming, uh, year. As, as, um, uh, Adam, uh, stated on that, we're willing to front, uh, the monies upfront for us and then, uh, have the city, once we know what, uh, is budgeted from you folks back. Um, our thoughts then become, uh, with the, as we grow in sponsorships, um, with the other programs, uh, primarily through chambers, we're not, uh, leaving our other, uh, campaigns out. Um, so, but with growing with that, uh, the foundation, we want to get back to being able to also project with various, uh, I want to say, uh, placements of, of, uh, uh, equipment or other type of, uh, needs that the city has to enhance, uh, not only the lives of the citizens, but also the quality, uh, and, uh, um, the looks that Colby Park, uh, brings about. And I use Colby Park, that's not the sole one, but, uh, in the past, we have done other things, but Colby Park is probably the primary, uh, push. Uh, and that's the one, one part of the city that a lot of people see when they come down.
Now, do you apply for grants through like Pray Meadows or Polk County Supervisors also for these type of ev, events since you're a?
We do. Um, we have not gotten in this, last year, we did not get anything. Um, we have applied, um, we will continue to apply for any grants that we have out there that are available, uh, to the foundation.
What is also the city's contribution on space? Cause that's another component, right? Like we, we'll have a request for?
I think incorporated in this request is a waiver of the pavilion fees.
Okay.
So that is included in this fifteen thousand? So we read, we take that out of the fifteen thousand?
Additional waiver on it. It's an additional ask to the fifteen thousand dollars in waiver of those fees.
So if I did my math on this, we're like almost six thousand because I think that we've now booked there, booked every Tuesday out for, I'm saying four hours. I don't know how.
Oh, for the actual C E C.
For the C E C and the pavilion. So then, you know, that's fifty-nine thirty-two. Don't take my math for. I mean, like.
Yeah, I guess it would be.
Somebody might want to redo that, cause.
The request is for a formal waiver of the pavilion fees. Uh, I think from a staff perspective, we're hesitant to try to rent out. That said, Tuesday's nights are typically fairly slow on the C E C's rental side. We're hesitant to rent out the C E C, given the amount of traffic going on in the park. So right now we have bookmarked those out as not available, not necessarily reserved by the foundation, but not available for booking out of concern that somebody might book it and not be able to have any parking stalls. So, um, certainly take direction from council if you'd like to amend that policy, but, uh.
Have we done that in the past or is that just this time because of our construction issues?
Uh, Nate, I think you looked at that last year, right? Do we, do you recall what the policy was?
At least in most circumstances, the C E C was blocked as well.
I know it, it has been for the Fourth of July for the last few years for sure. I don't know about Tuesday nights.
For when they celebrated the fourth, whatever date that would be.
Okay. Well, I'll just tell you, um, as a matter of full transparency, council has not seen, uh, the budget. I have not seen.
Oh, you haven't?
The budget. Um, right?
This city's budget.
Oh, right, the city's.
Okay, I was gonna say.
The city's budget.
We.
It's not your budget.
They're just starting the process.
Yes, yes. Um, and so when we talk about, um, you know, cultural funds or, um, things like this, uh, I don't think council really has any sort of idea as to what funds are available. Uh, five thousand dollars, that's probably not an issue. Fifteen thousand dollars, you're tripling your ask. That still may not be an issue, an issue. But considering, once again, council has no idea what the budget looks like, nor do I. Um, I think it might be a good idea to actually, um, look at that.
Okay.
So, we were just handed a nice budget calendar. And it would appear that Personnel and Finance Committee is reviewing the proposed budget the week of February twelfth, twenty twenty-four. And so at that time, uh, that can obviously be looked at as well. If that's what council decides is appropriate, um, discussing the fifteen thousand dollar ask and bringing that back as part of the budget recommendations, if council feels that's appropriate or whatever else council would feel is appropriate.
Um, has, has this request gone to special events yet? No. So.
I don't know if it's a special event or if it's a budgetary or if it's a.
That's true too.
I don't know if it's.
Well, but I think it fits within. So the recommendations or requests that come forward from special events, maybe that that's as Rochelle i- is building out the budget, um, and having those conversations. So maybe that's the direction is the recommendations from the Special Events Committee as part of that.
Whatever motion you're gonna make.
Well, I think it's in their territory, so.
I mean, it's a, it's, it, but it's a bu, it's, it's not a city, it's a budgetary ask. It's just the city writing essentially a check. It's not the city, uh, it's not a city event. So I, I can see it being the purview of either committee.
It could also be the city contracting for events to happen, right? I mean, that's essentially what this could be considered as well. So I think as a committee, Teresa and I, and you should probably hear from the other committees if it's something that affects, could affect their budget, right?
Same about them.
Right.
So my forty thousand dollars would be reduced down to twenty-five thousand? In theory, like if I only get my forty thousand dollar budget for special events? We're gonna be doing a lot of stuff.
Up to us. We're putting our shoes on. We, and we have a work session scheduled too, that we could talk about what bucket it could come out of. So maybe, maybe it's on the, on February nineteenth at that work session that we talk about. Once we have a picture of how things look and can talk about where it would come from and what dollar amount.
Just so we can make sure that we're all on the same page, would that go through special events? Because then we would have to wait until February's meeting and I don't know when that is for special events to discuss. If we're pushing it through special events. I was gonna say, I love my computer or my calendar.
Sixteen.
So we would still technically, if we wanted to put it on special events on that committee agenda, okay? If that's the route we're thinking.
Are you comfortable with that?
That's events, make a recommendation and then, um, that comes to the work session as whatever is, whatever you guys recommend as part of that? Or whatever your ask is?
Okay.
So then, um, for special, our next special events meeting, should we ask Mark to pr, to present again to the rest of the special events committee? And, um, we can let the other members of special events committee know that we don't have dollar amounts necessarily yet. Um, but recommendation to, yes, support this foundation to the dollar amount that we're able to. Since we won't have like solid numbers then, okay.
Then mark your calendar.
He's always there. He's always there.
Out of curiosity, there'll likely be other third-party organizations that make requests to us as well. Greater Des Moines Partnership, um, expects to, uh, make a request for funding again this year too. Would council like to see those directly, uh, in advance? Or would you like to have a committee recommendation on those? Just looking for a little, little feedback on how you'd like to see these as we get into the budgetary process. I think for those types of things, you can just list them and put them in, like this was what's coming or going out of this bucket. So we can at least know which things are covered, which are not, or what's been requested. That makes sense. Yeah.
This is a little unique because it's a, I mean, there are events and we have a special events committee and we're, they're asking for major sponsorship. I think it's a little bit different.
Yeah.
But those are things.
Knowing these are the memberships that we're paying for out of this budget. These are the events we're gonna be a part of. For the D C trip or whatever it is.
And does there need to be a motion on that?
I don't believe so. I don't believe there needs to be a motion on it. It was just considered or just a discussion.
All right. Is that as clear as mud to you, Mark?
Sounds good.
Okay. So it will be discussed at the, um, Special Events Committee meeting in February. All right, five B. I will do the short version of this. Consideration of Resolution Number twenty twenty-four oh-two. A resolution authorizing the city of Windsor Heights to submit a M P O Green Bay Trail Grant.
Let's approve.
Second.
Adam.
There is, uh, an opportunity that the city has applied for, uh, subject to this resolution for helping reconstruct a portion of our trail. Uh, there is additional funds allocated this year since last year, the TAP grant fund was not, um, uh, awarded. And so, uh, Bolton Mink has helped us put together that grant application. And, uh, what we're looking. And, uh, what we're looking to do is potentially match the hundred and thousand, hundred and ten thousand dollars that we have requested, uh, from the grant. Uh, with city dollars if we're awarded, uh, this grant. Um, and we would be looking at reconstruction of the portion of the trail. From the south end of the interstate, uh, to about, uh, the starting point of the Walmart. Parking lot, uh, likely with, uh, P C C, uh, concrete, uh, which is currently, uh, asphalt, if I recall. Uh, so this is sort of a, a project of opportunity here, uh, if we are selected for the grant. Uh, and just note, a lot of these grants typically go towards regional efforts of connecting, uh, new areas, uh, but with the work going on in Colby Park this year. And the amount of traffic that trail gets, uh, we felt it was worth putting in application, um. As kind of part of that to try to get that work complete while we're already out there with other active, uh, construction as well. So. Uh, happy to answer any questions you might have. Justin's also here, uh, can assist with any questions.
Questions?
Has this been budgeted at all? I mean, like, have we budgeted this at all for this year, next year, any year?
This is a new project concept. We are, we've added it into our preliminary C I P, uh, as subject to grant funding, much kind of the way that we're looking on seventy third street south with the raise grant. Uh, we're confident we can find those dollars in existing road use tax or, uh. Local option sales tax dollars to get the project, uh, done, uh, at this discount, uh, if we get that grant. The grant doesn't materialize. Uh, the project will be pushed back, maybe reapply for that grant, but. The trail's condition is starting to deteriorate. So this is something that's gonna become more prominent in the C I P going forward. Uh, it's just. The opportune time to apply, given the extra funds and the work at, at Colby Park this year. So.
Remind me the, uh, phase one of the Colby Park project, is that still under budget or under what we had? We thought it was gonna be.
Engineers' cost estimate, correct?
Okay.
That was a, it's a cash project. So we're not bonded to that.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
So the total project cost is two, two hundred seventy one thousand and we are applying for a hundred and ten?
And for a hundred and ten, and we would potentially be funding about a hundred and ten, uh, subject to what the, the bids would come back at. Is that correct, Justin?
Shot for that. They didn't use the funds last year. So this year at double funds. It was back this cycle, we're hoping to maybe catch something in there where. We might have a little money extra that we can spend on the bigger projects. It's might fit in there nicely. So.
Further questions or discussion? Bearing non-roll call.
Yes.
Justin Jones?
Yes.
Michael Levy?
Yes.
On example?
Yes. Yes.
Uh, five C, consideration of resolution number twenty twenty three sixty seven, a resolution appro- approving updating the C E C guidelines and information for the city of Windsor Heights.
Love to approve. Second.
Uh, Nate. Looks like you've done some work since last time.
Have, yes. Thank you, council. Um, I did provide an update here for you and I actually do have. A little bit more of an update that I'm gonna pass around here.
Give him some homework.
A ton of information that is, uh, just expanding, uh, on what I provided I did in the last two years. This expands that to the last six minus twenty twenty. And so, uh, just to clarify, essentially, um. What I looked at was the money that we are bringing in each year, uh, as well as the, the loss, the local option sales tax, uh, which. Puts thirty thousand dollars towards the C E C each year. Um, and then I looked at that versus the budget that we have budgeted for. And then the actual amount spent. So there's three different figures. It's kind of a lot of information. If you have questions, please let me know. Um, and then I just provided additional information, um, for the past additional years that Teresa had requested. So. Um, happy to answer any. Any additional questions that you guys might have. Um, and then the other big change, um, just due to, uh, council recommendation. Was just changing the staff recommendation from option A to option B, which is, uh, switching to a three hour minimum rather than getting rid of the one third and two third. Options in the C E C.
So did you, were you able to contact the cleaning crew to see if like Teresa had brought up that we're paying three hundred twenty five dollars for a third of the cleaning? Were we able to renegotiate the costs or, and bring that down a bit or?
Yes, for the partial spaces. Um, they have agreed to do, uh, two ten for, uh, the one third space. Two forty five for the two third space and three twenty five as is for the full space. Um, to break that down for you, if we continued with our standard two hour minimum. Um, we'd be making a whopping fourteen dollars on a two hour rental. Uh, we'd be making about nineteen dollars on, uh, for, sorry, for the. One third space, uh, nineteen dollars for a two third space, uh, and about twenty seven dollars for a full space. Uh, I do still recommend increasing that to three hours, just so that we are making more than pennies on these rentals.
So it's probably in here, but what is the three hour? What are we making then on the three hour? If we do it to the three hour? For the third, the two thirds and the full.
Yep. Um, so three hour minimum, um, assuming resident rate, which is the lowest cost, uh, we would be making. Three thirty six minus the two ten, we'd be making, uh, one twenty six. Uh, it'd be three ninety six we'd be bringing in for th- or the two third space for three hours. Which is a hundred and fifty one dollars and then, uh, five twenty eight for the full space. Which would be about two hundred and three dollars.
It does not seem like a lot of money.
Well, what I don't understand, and I mean, I just, I've done a lot of rentals for events and even like. Homes and whatever else the case may be, you pay the cleaning fee above and beyond. I guess I'm, I'm confused as to why the cleaning fee is covering. The cost of the rental, like that seems backwards to me. Like anything I've ever rented, the cleaning fee is above and beyond what your rental fee is. And I think when we, when I first came on council anyway, I felt like our, the cleaning fee was like. If you opted, like, I feel like you need to, and I think I saw that in some of the comparisons as well in here. So you have a choice, like you can clean it yourself, which I know ours says you need to restore it too. But then if you restore it too, and we're still paying the cleaning fee, that is not, why, why would we do that? Does it make zero sense to me? So you can, and I think that part of that discussion was, is that people weren't doing it. Well, if they're not doing it, then they're gonna be charged that three hundred and twenty five dollars or whatever that fee should, is and should be. Cause that's how it is with any other place that you. That you rent. I mean, I think about, I've rented the Geovini Center over in Urbandale several times. Uh, my job is to clean it back to how it was. If it's not where it was, then, then I pay additional, I get charged on my credit card. So this should not be part of our, our revenue. And I think that that's, I think reflected in like our decreased revenues potentially. I don't know. I'm just.
Didn't we change this though, two years ago?
That is correct.
This, so we used to have it be the cleaning fees and then Travis, there was a discussion about. How convoluted or whatever. I can't remember exactly how this all played. Because it has been a little bit ago, but then we said, okay, well, we'll take that cleaning fee and put it into the, but at that time, the cleaning fee was like a hundred and fifty dollars. And now it's like three hundred and twenty five dollars. So that we haven't jumped our rates up. With the cleaning fees or adjusted accordingly, but then we have to kind of find that spot between. Having the appropriate costs for people to still want to rent from us compared to the other comparables. And actually making more than fourteen dollars or, you know, twenty six dollars in a. A rental, which I mean, is it even worth turning the heat on for that? You know, I, I mean.
This is not a good business practice right now.
Yeah. This is, so we need to figure this, we need to figure this cleaning stuff out. We need to figure, I'm just not comfortable. I, I understand that we did this because they were reliable. They showed up. But I, I just think that that is just an astronomical amount, considering we're asking the people to clean up before they even leave. So how much cleaning are they doing? Are they getting, are they even there for an hour or two? I, I mean, they're making some pretty good money off of us. So that's my concern is this is not worth even keeping open if we're getting. We're making twenty six dollars in a three hour group. I, you know, we need to figure something a little different out here.
I'd like us to go back to considering that the renter needs to clean up after themselves or they'll be charged. Much like Teresa said, that they'd be charged to the cleaning fee. I know that that would put some extra administrative time because then it's somebody. Probably Nate has to go and check to make sure that they, you know, do a walkthrough after, um, after each rental to make sure that it is cleaned up. But I think that would be. I, I would much prefer that over raising the, the rates.
Do we know who did that before? Was it Public Works that went out there and did it or was it? And then, but who would go and check prior to, was that?
They actually, they go there and they do, they would charge us two different rates, a spot clean or a full clean. Um, and so then if they only needed a spot clean, they would only charge us that much. And then if they need a full clean, they would charge us that, the other rates. The problem with that was, there was a lot of problems with that. It's kind of maybe it needs to be a work session or something. I'm telling you, there's so much in this.
Cleaning service work session.
Wow. They make C E C profitable.
Just to be a hundred percent clear, Nate, uh, council really appreciates the work that you've done so far. Okay. I, I, I recognize that you have put in a lot of work here. It is a hundred, if it's not abundantly clear, uh, I think we. There just is some consternation about the money being paid towards this cleaning service.
Sure.
Yeah, this is nothing against you.
Appreciate that.
Um. So that, that seems to be the, uh, the issue. I think my concern is, is exactly what, what. So what happens in the situation where you have an event on a Friday night, they don't clean it up and then there's an event Saturday morning?
That's the concern.
And then there's, okay, then what? It didn't get cleaned up. So then what? What do we do? Are you hurrying and service master or something? You know, like what, what happens then?
Right.
So I think that's, that is the worry. And I'm sure we can, we can figure out what, you know, what the, how to fix that, but. I assume that is why the plan of operations is currently why exists, exists as it does now.
Well, and I would take it a step further. That, I, I think it's really about, it's not. Be honest with you, I don't care what the cleaning fee is, as long as it's, uh, but it's about who pays it, right? It's about how do we make the community center profitable, right? I mean, that's at the end of the day, I think what our goal is here. And the cleaning fee is a portion of that, that we think is, is a little bit crazy, but we're not the only ones that have this situation. So maybe conversations with. Johnson and West Des Moines and Urbandale and how do you guys approach this, you know? And, you know, when you have this, if, if. They have a model that's similar to what potentially want to go to, which is the person opts and says, maybe there's a check mark. I will self-clean. Or I'm gonna opt for the, um. You know, the, somebody else to clean it. But if somebody, if, if you opt to self-clean and you don't. Then it's, maybe it's a five hundred dollar cleaning fee, right? Right? Whatever is that? Going to have to be that emergency. Um, you know, whatever the fee is for that emergency clean, basically, if that makes sense. Susan and I are gonna start a new business.
Yep.
And so, um, but so I just think that that's how we have to, I, I'm, I'm, I'm open to a work session on this, if this is what we need. But, um, but I think that it's, we got, we've, we've got to figure out how do we. Get this to be a profitable because it, it was in the past and we gotta get it back to, to that and moving to this. Recommendation was not a good, good choice and we need to reverse our trajectory on it soon.
And looking at, at Nate's notes, it looks like a lot of the cities have their own in. Internal cleaning team that they're not using a vendor so that they can do it ad hoc. And so that's one disadvantage for us is.
That was true for both West Des Moines and Johnston.
Didn't Urbandale have that too?
Anchovies has an unreliable cleaner.
So Anchovies, they do some in-house, um. And then, uh, on weekends, uh, they use a familiar that I'm familiar with from a past life. And, uh, yeah, no. So, yeah.
Just add two, two details and, and I guess I'm not, not saying that we shouldn't take a look at. The entire policy as opposed to just tweaking it, which is really what we've done here, but, um, weekday rentals. Uh, we have a little bit of a different policy, I believe, which is staff is, if stat, if it's a daytime weekday rental. Or even an evening one where staff will be in in the morning, we would take a look at the rental and see if it needs a cleaning as opposed to a weekend one. And then while there may be pennies on the dollar, sort of a revenue standpoint or a net profit on. The three hour rentals, the vast majority of the rentals are in well in excess of, of three hours. And I think you provided that data last time. So.
Yes.
Don't get too affixed, I guess, on kind of these minimum rental ones, because most of these are in a full evening rental, I think, on the weekends. And weekdays, we can treat a little bit differently than we have to in the weekends as opposed to calling in staff. Just to come and take a look at the C E C and then make a split second decision. We gotta call an emergency cleaner or not. We do have, um, the ability to do some spot cleaning in-house with Public Works. Um. We don't want to become the primary cleaner for that, cause then we have to kind of think about staffing differently. But if it's just a simple little cleanup, um. On a Tuesday morning before the next Tuesday rental after a Monday, that's a lot easier to manage in-house than it is a Friday night, um, event. And then followed by a Saturday one. So. Just a couple more items to think about, I guess, when we, when we look at this.
I guess the question would then be too, when, when I talked to Nate earlier, it was like, you know, really understanding the data, which, and I really do appreciate your time pulling this together is. Um, you know, to, to understand how many, how many Friday night and Saturday rentals do we have? Right? Like, how often is that happening through the year? I mean, that's the other thing we need to look at. We need to have a concept of what that is and you can take your numbers over the last five years and look at that information.
And, and the challenge, I think the, the little that we've looked at it is COVID had a meaningful impact. Um. All marketing was stopped on the, uh, the C E C, which we plan to start again after park improvements happen. But we're a little hesitant to throw a bunch of money into marketing it while we've got significant park improvements going on. And you can see, I mean, the, the revenue dropped significantly, but. Yeah, the expense side of the equation, um. I don't know that it has. So I don't know. It's just, uh, the cleaning fees that you're seeing here, um, impacting the, uh. The profitability of the C E C. I think you've got the COVID, uh, response and then. Kind of, uh, turnover in staff and then needing to ramp back up some marketing efforts and getting the percentage of nights rented again on the weekends back up too.
But I do think it's like our job to be fiscally responsible on this and look out, even if. Even if, you know, we only have a few days, those are still days that we do have. And if we're trying to ramp up and build up more people coming through, then those small days will turn into big days, which will turn into a lot of lost profits for us. So I, I think that we have to look to the future as well and kind of worry about. Absolutely. You know, that, take that into account.
What, when you talk about marketing, cause I know that was also in here, um, so suggested marketing activities. Um, what is the timeframe? When would you suggest that you amp that up?
I would put that in the fiscal year twenty twenty five budget, um, which would start in July. And obviously I wouldn't dip into that until we have at least substantial completion of the park improvements. So that would probably. If that stays on the correct timeline, I believe September thirtieth is substantial completion date.
Day before Fall Festival.
Sure.
That's how I think of it.
Okay. But so as somebody who does, so as I'm thinking and I'm generally looking for, so when I did my son's graduation, I did a year in advance, right? Um, so I'm suggesting that I think you're not taking the right approach because people are looking, especially when they're looking for weddings. Or looking for, um, graduations or what, what, those are, those are a year out that you're planning. Um, and then for like things like baby showers and whatever, you're two month, you're eight weeks out for those things. So I think. You, I would not, I would actually amp up your marketing today for those. So I think you, I would not, I would actually amp up your marketing today for those graduation and, um, wedding. You know what I mean? I would look at the, I would look at that very different from my perspective on just like the targeted, you know, uh, groups that you're, you're looking for. Good for that.
I agree. Somebody from the chamber just got engaged and she already was looking for 2025. So, I mean, at this point in time, this is when all the brides, everybody gets engaged in December, January, you know, New Year, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, New Year's Eve, New Year's Day. And so now all the bridal shows are going to start coming and, you know, go from there.
All right. Um, so counsel, what's the, uh, what's the solution here? What, what do you want to see happen here? Do you want to have a work session on this?
Yes, I think so.
Okay. Um, well, it's budget season, but, uh,
It can be an optional work session for anybody who wants to be, uh, a part of the conversation, not a three hours after a council meeting type work session. Joseph's like, sign me up. Don't we have a wedding to plan? I don't know who's it is.
We will shoot for it not to be after a, we'll, we'll do a doodle poll. We will shoot for it not to be after a council meeting, because those can be, uh, I understand those can be a grind. So, uh, we will, um, we will do a doodle poll and we'll figure it out.
Thank you again for, for doing all this and providing, I know I sent an email to you, but I'll say it again. Really appreciate you showing us the figures, because I think it's a lot easier for us to see and understand when we have figures in front of us.
Your motion on that?
Yeah, Ms. Harms, you want to withdraw the motion?
I will.
Yes.
All right. So 5D consideration of resolution number 202364, a resolution approving updated fee schedule for the city of Windsor Heights.
Move to approve.
Talk to you.
Adam?
Not going to make much progress on our non-consent agenda tonight, because we have the, uh, the C E C rentals built into this one. So I'll just note, one, uh, council member comment question was, uh, the status temporary permits. What other communities do and whether we should be charging, um, some, uh, some fees related to garden centers and storage pods specifically? The answer is yes, those are what would typically fall under a temporary permit category and be charged fee. Uh, in other communities, it is defined that way, I believe, from my interpretation in our current code as well. Uh, so I think it just goes back again to staff transitioning and a need to start, uh, enforcement of that again going forward. So, uh, upon eventual approval of, uh, of the new fee stat, schedule here, we'll, we'll get to work on, on doing that again going forward, would be my intention. Uh, that said, C E C rental, um, is built into this, so I guess we'd have the option of, uh, either adopting the fee schedule with, uh, one of these options, uh, in it, or, uh, we can delay implementation of the fee schedule until we have a resolution on the C E C, um, costs. And there's nothing, uh, urgent about approving this fee schedule. Uh, it's just, uh, a little overdue since it was not done last year either, uh, so.
We can't take out the C E C rental out of the fee schedule and approve the rest of it, or?
You could leave it as is, if you'd like.
So I would, uh, change my motion to approve with the exception of the C E C fees.
And I second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Susan Sears?
Yes.
Justin Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
On Campbell?
Yes.
Teresa Harms?
Yes.
5E consideration of University Avenue poll banners. Uh, Adam?
So looking for, uh, additional feedback on our poll banners, just as a quick refresher, uh, we had a communications committee meeting, uh, about a month and a half ago or so, looked at the options that had been provided to the city about a year and a half ago, or maybe two years when University Avenue was being reconstructed. Uh, we ordered, or Lauren was kind enough to get us a sample ordered of, uh, the preferred one there. Uh, we hung that up for a bit. There's a little bit of concern that the, uh, the city slogan there, in the heart of it all was a little too small, particularly if you're in a vehicle, uh, to read that. Uh, so, uh, with assistance of, uh, Councilmember Campbell again, uh, we had some additional designs, uh, put together. Um, and you'll see an attachment, A, uh, the one that we thought, uh, might be kind of nice, uh, kind of alternating there. And, uh, and then an option B, uh, which was, uh, the original design with a slightly larger in the heart of it all, to the extent that you could fit it on a, you know, sort of tall banner, uh, with words going left to right on that. Uh, so I think there's been some feedback that, uh, the sideways, uh, wording would be a little tricky to read for folks as well. Uh, so we've got Vanna White here, I think, uh, to, to hold it up for everybody, uh, and take a look at, uh, the new concepts. So that would be one side that you would see, uh, just the Windsor Heights kind of graphic there, and that's the other. If you tilt your head to the side, you can definitely read it.
I think it's, I think it's actually flipped up.
You want it like that?
Yeah, so it's Windsor Heights, Knights of it all on the one side, and then the logo sideways on the other side.
So that is the, the newest option. The other one there is, was the original option, the, you know, heart of it all would be again slightly larger. Uh, in the redesign, I think the lines changed a little bit just to accommodate that font side, but it's kind of true to that general form. Uh, so we could go, continue to go that route as well, or, uh, some of the other concepts that Councilmember Campbell put together on the secondary one, uh, are out there as well. Uh, so that kind of opened it up to discuss in some direction from council.
I'm a little worried about the W H this way. I, I guess for me, I, it's not, it's thing to be to look at. Um, if I were to pick one out of all of these many options that, uh, Lauren went through, thank you for doing this all. I personally would go with set C. I don't know the colors, you know, I'm not too sure. I guess I don't really care about the colors, but, um, I think that that would be, that's my personal preference, but, um, I just looked at it and think, is that W H? Is that H W? I, it's, when I looked at it, that was what I was thinking.
It's hard because our logo, the direction of the text, and then the dimensions of it, so again.
I'm going to agree with Susan. I don't like the sideways. It was, it's hard to read. I can't. So I'd love feedback from anybody else. Um, I, um, I'm open to, um, to C or F. I like that too, um, which is also the other, you know, the one that's very similar to, to the one we have there. Um, I, the idea of the different colors alternating, or I don't, I'm assuming that, is that what the idea was? That the different colors alternating? I kind of like that better than the three different colors, um, on this, on F, but, um, but I'm open, but I, I, I do, I think that that provides some good. Yeah, I like it. I know it does make it really hard with, um, the text. Their logo.
Can I offer a suggestion? It's, uh, you can't tell whether or not it's H W or C, H W H, H W, CBD, right?
Right. Take the banners.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, thank you. If, if you look over the mayor's right shoulder, you'll see a banner with Windsor Heights and the logo, which looks just fine. My thought would be that would be banner one, and then on the second banner, that would be right after that or before it, it doesn't really matter, come the words in the heart of it all. So you have a banner with the logo and Windsor Heights, and the next banner with a small logo on the bottom, it says in the heart of it all. So as people pass through, they're going to be seeing both the logo and the name, plus the slogan and a small logo. And they can all work vertically. That's just a suggestion.
One challenge is with the brand guidelines and the, using the font, the spacing and everything, there's only so big that we can make horizontal text for it. So, um, I, I could mock it up with similar font, but different spacing to show a couple other options. It's not going to be the actual brand kit that, uh, we paid for at some point as a city, but using the similar font, it just wouldn't have the same spacing, and we can just make it as big as possible, so it's as visible as possible. Because while this looks great behind Mike, when it's 17 feet in the air or whatever, it's, it's going to be difficult to see the, the thin letters that are spaced that far apart.
Are people going to take the time to read the heart of it all as they're driving through? I mean, I, I don't know. I wouldn't, I would stop and, stop reading. You know, I would just look at the, the logo itself and recognize the logo, because that's the recognizable part of Windsor Heights, you know? I'm, I'm up for whatever. I just don't want to waste, you know, more of your time if it's going to be something that, you know, it's going to be font like the Windsor Heights size. Sorry, didn't mean to put it right at you. The Windsor Heights, you know, font size there.
On your shirts. It's not on your shirts.
That's true.
True.
Yeah, usually when you get to that minute, they, it generally comes off, especially on apparel and hats and stuff like that. Um, I think you can just do the logo and take the heart of it all out, because I just think it's just too hard to, to read. It's not going to be up there. And it's really about, you're, you're doing brand recognition now anyway, right? I mean, this is the first time we're really putting this out there in this space and that sort of thing. So it's really about brand identification, brand recognition. And so I'm not sure you have to have the, the heart of it all. I think you could, you're just going with your image or logo.
So do you want to do, so what I'm hearing then is C without the, in the heart of it all, and do the full palette, so get the purple and the other teal in there as well?
That's great. I like the alternating colors.
Yeah, I think that would be, that would look good.
Wait until we design a city flag at some point.
Oh goodness.
There's a work session.
Good luck.
Or four.
Have fun.
Let me put that off for another four years.
I think that's a special events committee job.
I think that's communication.
I think it might be joint committee for y'all.
All right.
So, once again, we'll go back to the well and, uh, ask you to do a little redesign work for us, if you wouldn't mind.
This is, this is, uh, this is fun work to do while I'm avoiding doing other work, so.
And, uh, we'll get one more sample, get that hung up, and, uh, let everybody take one last look at that, and go from there and have them ready to go by spring.
Great. Okay.
We made it through our agenda.
Uh, reports. I need to get a report for you. I haven't done so. I will at next, uh, city council meeting. This week, uh, M P O, uh, there is a, going to be an interesting discussion about, uh, light passenger rail. And, uh, there is a, uh, as you know, a railroad, a track that goes through the center of Windsor Heights. Well, kind of towards the bottom of Windsor Heights, I suppose, but that would be part of the, uh, proposed passenger rail. And so there are very preliminary discussions about that. That is something that's going to be discussed very early on at the M P O, and so I will bring back information, uh, to council about that. I have a meeting with Megan Schneider from Trees Forever on Thursday. Uh, council had expressed some interest in a tree program, sort of a tree rehabilitation program, similar to what Cedar Rapids put together, and so I'm going to have some preliminary discussions about what that looks like. I will bring back, uh, information about, uh, the meeting with her to council as well. Ms. Harms?
Very good. Um, Mac met on last Tuesday. Um, so we got an update from Metro Waste. Uh, Michael McCoy gave us, and Leslie gave us an update on everything that's going on with Metro Waste, which we are very much otherwise aware, because Susan keeps us updated. Um, and then we elected Chris Coleman, uh, new council member in, new former council member in Des Moines, um, as a new chairperson. Budgets, committee meeting last Friday, Friday? Yeah, the days run together these days. Um, and I actually have been working on, um, some special events, Windsor Wonderland, um, activities. So if you know anybody who has an artificial tree that they want to get rid of, um, I think we've already collected around 15 of our goal for 25, so my garage is full, and I think there's maybe some down at Public Works too. So we got a little haul. Actually, no, we probably have more, because you've got 10, right?
No.
Okay, and I think there's, okay, and I think. Okay.
Has Casey authorized that?
I, could you repeat that, please? Um, and I think I maybe have 10 or 12 in my garage, so, okay, we might be really close. So, um, anyways, we'll, we'll, um, take, I think three or four of them are like over nine footers too, so it's going to be interesting. Anyway, so surprise to come. Um, anyways, um, the legislature started on Mu- last Monday. Um, so, uh, pay, the league sends out their weekly legislative updates, so pay attention to those. Um, I think they're always good updates, there's forum, um, updates on there and stuff like that. Um, tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM, there is a subcommittee on the Stormwater, um, Topsoil Bill, um, that the, um, ICEWEP has been imposed to and engaged on, and so that's been one that, um, we've, um, we've been engaged on from the city, because we're an M4, right, Justin? City? Um, and then, um, and then also worked on, um, trying to secure some raised grant letters, and I've been a little disappointed in my, um, I've been on the phone and I've not gotten a great response.
It's not easy to, to get people.
Last time I got was, it was easy, and people have been really difficult to get ahold of. So anyways, I need to find out what our drop dead day is. Okay, all right. Okay, so.
I say I may have given you a premature one, just to get people motivated.
Oh, well, you did get a letter. I only have like four more that I need to confirm, and.
Thank you for signing up for so many of them.
So, yes, all right.
I did one and got one. I mean, somebody else took the brunt of everything, because.
All right, so I'll keep, well, okay, well, I'm, they're gonna. All right, I'm on it. Okay, thank you. I, just knowing that I have a little bit more time helps me. Okay, all right, thank you, so.
Why again, and tell her it's a couple weeks and thanks?
Yeah. He knows me. Thank, that's all, thank you.
I'll get council the, um, notes from the budget meeting by the end of this week. Ms. Campbell?
Want to start by thanking the Windsor Heights Fire and Police Department for all of their work yesterday at the house fire, a couple doors up from me. Um, I'm sure Susan will thank them as well, but I want to call special attention to Susan knew, um, exactly what, uh, they would need for their recovery. Um, and immediately, uh, reached out to Tiffany and started coordinating food. Um, and, um, I am a little nervous that there, that the fired, other, the community, the other communities that sent firefighters, they're going to be a little too eager to put out fires in Windsor Heights now, because they were well-fed and well-taken care of, thanks to Susan, and, um, her knowledge of, uh, what they needed. Um, thanks to the Public Works crew for clearing the two feet of snow we got in the last 10 days. Holy cow. Um, and then, um, much as Teresa said, special events planning is well underway. Thank you to Councilwoman Scurry again, who's been working with Tiffany on sponsorships, um, for Movies in the Park, Earth Day, Fall Festival, Veterans Day, and Windsor Wonderland. All I got.
Mr. Libby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been a long time since we've seen each other at themes, and, uh, this meeting has gone by quickly, and, uh, we're very pleased about that. Uh, my only, uh, uh, thing to bring up is, uh, again, thank you, Susan, for your work with regard to our fire department and the fire departments. It was a tragedy for some. I'm so grateful that no one was injured or, uh, worse. And, uh, but I think showing respect and showing gratitude all the time is something that we should look at, uh, with, with great sincerity. And, and so it was, uh, it was really nice that you took the, uh, the time to do that. And I know, uh, Chief Meese and the rest of our, uh, great fire department are pleased. Uh, finally, I, I really don't have any other report other than the fact that, uh, it was 65 degrees in San Diego today. But hey, who's, who's counting, right? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That's enough, Michael. Thank you.
It was in the several, it was in the single digits today, right? I mean. It was in the subtle, it was in the single digits today, right? I mean.
Twenty-two. Looking forward to it.
So it's almost short weather.
Right?
Joseph, Mr. Jones?
Dart will reconvene next week, week today. Obviously lots of conversations about what our future budget and service looks like. Want to commend the mayor for his nice piece that he wrote about the importance of public transit to our community and our metro. Yeah, we're going to have some tough conversations. I might be calling each of you to have conversations with other people as well to make sure that folks know where we stand as a community when it comes to public transit. But it's definitely not going to be comfortable conversations for the next 12 months.
Scary?
Alrighty, it has been a busy few weeks. I attended a few ribbon cuttings and chamber events. Lauren and I were busy getting together the sponsorship request for the chambers T R C sponsors, sponsorship drive that starts on Friday. Thank you, Lauren, for all of your hard work. Thank you to Tiffany for all of your hard work in helping us as we start this new partnership and kind of holding my hand as I go through this process. It's been eye opening, but we hope to increase the number of sponsors by including our requests in with the chamber sponsorship requests. So hopefully that will help us be able to increase our, the amount of services that we provide at a lower cost to the city. So crossing our fingers, but the luminaries across Windsor Heights were nice. New Year's Eve, I received compliments from people at my own New Year's Eve party about it, and they wish their neighborhoods did something nice like that. So it was really nice to see. I attended the Metro Waste Exec Board meeting. Looks like the rates for recycling collection will go up by a whopping four cents in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. So the total household cost to recycle will be $4.58 beginning July 1st, as long as our increases are approved. Solid waste collection, new rates will be coming out shortly. Joseph and I attended the Des Moines Partnership Investors Iowa Caucus Media Filing Center Tour yesterday. Goodness, that's wait the word. Then, let's see, we have a special events meeting on Friday. Thank you to Public Works for being out and about in the snow, keeping our streets clear. I appreciate all your hard work and the horrible temps and the frustrating drifting that we had. Congrats goes out to paramedic firefighter Brian Jones for being named paramedic of the year. Paramedic firefighter Brett Mercille for being named firefighter of the year. And firefighter E M T Colin Melody for being named most improved member of the year. Thank you to West Des Moines, Clive Urbendale and our own fire department for their hard work on knocking down and putting out the house fire yesterday. Things were slippery. If you watch the news, you will see one firefighter fell. Wet, cold, and did I mention very cold? It was not ideal conditions for fighting a fire. So good job to Chief Meese for his leadership and thank you to the other department chiefs who provided their expertise. Thank you to Lauren as well, who opened up her house to everybody who needed it. Her garage was kind of like the zone that we went to, to get warm. Thank you to Tiffany and Gina with the Urbendale Chamber for stepping up to make sure that all of the firefighters fighting the fire on Sixty-third Street had food and hot drinks. So I'm going to shout out to all the businesses that helped out. They stepped out, stepped up to help out at a moment's notice, and that's Marco's Pizza, Tito's Lounge, Hy-Vee in Urbendale and Friedrich's Coffee. See. Oh, I forgot to promote the talk with officials. Why were you not promoting this? With Chamber on the twenty-seventh.
Will I be there?
Yes.
Okay.
I was going to say, it says you were going to be there. Might be an interesting meeting. January twenty-seventh. Sign up now as there's limited space available in the, the conference room itself, but it's available via Zoom. But you need to sign up to get the Zoom link sent out to you. So you can hear hopefully Mayor Jones, Senator Selsey and Representative Comfirst answer questions. And our co-county supervisor.
McCoy.
So that's it.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
So move second.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Sears?
Yes.
Justin Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes. Yes.